All right, we'll open the mind planning commission on zoning board. Stand for the pledge.
Consider the flag of the United States of America. Consider the republic of its citizens. Constitution.
Hong Kong.
We should do. Do the absence of the chair that this body needs to a lot of temper and chair. Are there any nominees?
I know.
Are there any seconds? There's been a motion. Commissioner McCarty. Chair. Right. Joint combine planning. Commission. Don't be able to. Is there any discussion on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
You know, if we're close to make it happen. There we have. Okay, any announcements of correspondence?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Approval of the April 5th. On your board of ordinance. As presented.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
On second. Yes. Are you?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, do we have anybody to sign up for public comment here this evening? We have anybody who's going to be talking later within. Presentation.
There's questions?
There will be. Yes. Okay, any more business?
No, Mr. Chairperson. Just in cases only.
Okay, new business. PCB 2305 consideration of special use for operation. And it was just a full trigger. Go to 16. 201 002.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that the rep or by this public care being heard person to public notice. In course of states direction of the co-ordinances. Mr. Chairman, this matter comes before you, you recall the applicant. Came before you last year for a proposal for a dispensary. They were proposing dispensary at a packing house. They were actually approved by the village board in February. This year, especially used to prove by the village board. After extensive discussions with the staff. After extensive due diligence, applicant. Discuss with staff that they were not in a position. To proceed with that special use because of the prohibitive cost of rehabbing that building. Again, the property is 510 on Main Street could be called the packing house. And consequently, they work with the staff for the past number of months. Find a new location, they are made quite clear. That they believe Antioch is a very good market, but a potential cannabis dispensary. I say, well, now any type of cannabis dispensary, in course, would our village ordinance. Requires a special use ordinance. So after working with staff. They identified potential opportunities along the route 173 corridor. Staff did work with the applicant, identified a location. Which did need some variation from ordinance. Highly a little later. But the applicant is for the record requesting a special use for the property of 417 East Route 173. So with context, it's also important. To look at the site, the site is located. On 173 between existing. Menards and to the to the west and the Walmart to the east. There is an existing building which is approximately 22,000 square feet. Commonly known as Antioch Crossing. It's owned by Mr. Jean Portman. And so the applicant has been working with the owner of the building. On taking approximately 20, 2,600 square feet. For a cannabis dispensary, so again, in regards to zoning, it's also important. To look at the zoning classifications written special use because we have to determine whether it's close use would have negative impact. On the adjacent property, so as you can see. All the properties along Route 73 are existing commercial outlets, which are zone B2 PUD. Property, obviously, the Menards property is a B2 PUD and Walmart is a B2. So property is literally surrounded by commercial uses. So with in accordance with our village ordinance, there's two finds of facts. Have to be looked at, you have to be determined. Before any special use could be looked at. So again, for the record, in terms of context, it's one of kind of. The applicant is actually here, Mr. Scales is representing the applicant. And he has presentation, he'll be more than happy to go through. The actual specifics of the proposal for this cannabis dispensary. So for to give you again, the applicant is proposing. To take approximately 2,600 square feet. Actually, for the record, it's 2,436 square feet. There's an existing Edward Jones, which will be vacating this property. Now that will be taken that space and additional space so that these two new existing spaces will constitute their proposed. Cannabis dispensary. For the record, this will be dispensary only, there'll be no consumption. No consumption on the property. Advocate has made it quite clear, they have no interest in consumption. On this subject site, so for the record, that does comply with the village ordinance. So first finding of fact that must be demonstrated for any. Proposed special use, especially will not be, I'm sorry, especially use would not be injurious. To the use enjoyment of other properties in the immediate area for the purposes already permitted. Nor substantially diminished property values. As I've already outlined, the site is clearly commercial in its very nature. It has commercial large, two large commercial big boxes to east and west. Adjacent to the property are commercial outlets. So therefore, we believe based on our analysis, this site is adjacent to commercial. The proposed use is inherently a commercial use, it's a dispensary, it's generally a retail slash dispensary. We believe that the proposed use is consistent with the existing uses within this plan year development. There's nothing to indicate that this proposed use would have any negative impact or diminish the property values of any adjacent. Commercial properties. And therefore, we do also believe it would be consistent with the general existing trend of development. This if this proposed cannabis dispensary was approved. There's nothing to indicate that that would in any way have a negative impact. On staff or village be being able to continue to attract. Commercial developers, not only to this post area, but along the route 173 corridor. So again, or from a planning perspective, we would submit respectively. The advocate has met the first finding of fact. And second finding of fact is the assessment of special use that impede the normal and orderly development. Improvements of adjacent properties for use permitted. So we say orderly development, I wanted to talk about one thing which has been a major. Consistent concern of this of this commission, but also the village board. And that's parking, we all know. Many cases, some of the recently approved cannabis dispensaries. Throughout Lake County in Northern Illinois, I've had inordinate. Demand and a large demand for parking, and there was a very healthy discussion. At the last meeting about the proposed parking at the packing house. So I wanted to just a little bit discuss the parking. Parking at this proposed area. And we can discuss that because perhaps that may be the biggest challenge. Besides some of the legal procedural issues which I'll cover lastly. So the first thing is the subject site. Currently, based on staff's analysis, has 136 parking spaces, including six handicap spaces. Based on our analysis. If you use a retail analysis, that's one space per 300. So if you subdivide the proposed square footage into the 300 square feet that's required for one space per 300 square feet. Theoretically, the advocate would need nine spaces. I would submit that using a retail analysis may be too conservative. So even if you use a more intense standard, let's say you double that, which will be a restaurant, sit down restaurant. That would be two spaces. You double that, the advocate would need at least a minimum of 16 to 20 spaces. As I've already outlined, there's 136 spaces. A proposed retail center generally required 74 spaces. And this proposed use of 24, 2,436 again. Would require at least using a more intense standard, at least 16 spaces. Now, as we've already discussed, we do not have a separate cannabis. Parking line item, so we we're trying to find analogous uses, so. Is a dispensary more analogous to a retail store, is it more analogous to a sit down restaurant? This is a gray area, and any type of discussion there. Is reasonable, that's something that the planning commission can discuss. But based on our analysis, we believe there's at least a minimum. Based on our observations, at least additional 16 spaces surplus in this area, you can see this area right here. That the parking lot has not been, it's not, has historically not been fully utilized. As you all know, there are a number of vacancies in the existing retail center. Back staff's basic observations of this property is that there's generally maybe substantially less than 50% of the parking is being utilized. There appears to be ample parking, which would provide enough parking for this proposed. 2,000 and approximately 2,400 square foot facility. As we will know, I, we did a previous analysis of several larger cannabis dispensaries. Whether it was the rise in Mundaline or the new facility in Round Lake Beach. Or the property in Lake and the Hills, and I'll allow Mr. Scales to. You know, basically outline why they need there's clearly sufficient parking. Those other facilities in Lake County are actually substantially larger. Than this proposed facility, in addition, some of those facilities actually have consumption on site. In addition, it's also probably discussed that we recently a cannabis dispensaries approved in Richmond, also one who went to Harbor. So we would submit respectively that the market is not the same, you know, with regards to. Size as what rise was approved, which had at least well over 100 parking spaces. That used at one point in time, that was the only cannabis dispensary in Lake County, Illinois. And therefore, that may currently justify the large parking field. That the mother line facility had, but I know many cases, people have compared, you know. Larger parking facilities in at the mother line facility, and also the Round Lake Beach facility. And like in the hills facilities compared to this facility. This again, for the record, substantially smaller store. Based on our really, we believe there's sufficient parking for this proposed use. So I will complete my analysis of the parking and I'll be more happy to. Answer any questions, but I think Mr. Scales, the representative of the advocate, can provide some additional information. Now, as you'll see, staff did not make a recommendation this evening because of some two major legal procedural issues. I wanted to just bring those to your attention. The first question is. There's a healthy discussion between the applicant. And staff on buffer, so you will know that there's existing daycare. There's an existing daycare. Located just south of all these. And that daycare, you do actually remember measurements, our GIS department did a measurement. And that daycare is, if you go from property line, the property line, in other words, the property line of this, what we call Antioch campus of this retail center. To the property line of the daycare facility. You're talking about 885 feet. Therefore, that's less than 1,000 feet that's required, village ordinance clearly states there has to be a thousand foot buffer between. A facility and property line. How if you measure the facility, you go from this whole space, I mean, the 2,600 square feet. That's being proposed to be occupied. And you take that distance and you measure that for the property line to daycare, that's 1,150 feet. There appears to be a legal interpretation question, or for the record, our. Ordinance says. For dispensaries, facilities may not be located, facilities may not be located within 1,000 feet. At the property line of a pre-existing public or private nursery, preschool. Or secondary school, so. I'll allow the advocate to make his argument, his legal argument. I think in some substance, the applicant does not believe he needs a variance. Because the facility itself, not the property line, the facility is over 1,000 feet. And I will allow our village attorney to basically provide a clarification or this very well. May require further legal analysis. And based on that fact, that based on that legal question. Staff was not comfortable because of some of the legal questions of whether a variance would be required from staff's perspective, a variance was required from day one. But because of that legal question, staff is not in a position. To make a favorable recommendation, or I'm sorry, just make a recommendation. Because we believe the applicant has met the findings of fact that are required for a special use. But because of the 1,000 foot buffer question. We are asking for a continuance of this matter to another, our next. Planning meeting. Because of some of the legal procedural questions, so with that, I'll be more than happy to. Answer any questions you may have, and I know Mr. Scales, the advocate. Advocate representative is actually here. To answer any questions and at least provide the planning commission. His perspective on on the legal procedural questions. With that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Mr. Gergen, has everything been done? Proper through.
Yes, we, we, our GIS department did provide Mr. Scales all the properties within 250 feet. So full list of that, and we did review the correspondence that was sent, three cards, three cards. And then in regards to the posting, there's a seat there's posted, there's a sign there, and we did publish it, so I think. The rubbish reflected, there was proper legal notice.
At this time, I suppose we can ask Mr. Scales if he'd like to add anything to the presentation. Anybody who needs to speak tonight about anything that we have on our agenda, probably the best time to swear you all in at once. So.
All right, anyone who prepared. Anyone preparing to give testimony for this body, please raise your right hand and prepare to be sworn. If you think you might. Raise your right hand and prepare to be sworn. Yep. Do you swear to tell the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Scales, please.
Hello again. So I think Mr. Gergen has covered pretty much the. General situation of what has gone on the last several months since we got approval for our special use. We tried our hardest to make packing house work, but it's just been costly ever. You know, this is actually our third site in Antioch, we started the 453 Main Street, moved to 510 Main Street, and now we're on. Probably 73. I believe that. All the criteria for the actual building, the facility have met, the only issue that we've got left is one, getting through you guys. Zoning and then going to village board. But our hiccup is the buffer zone from the daycare center. And interpretation with. Village council, our own interpretation, the state's interpretation, trying to get through that. And there's actually three different ways to look at how to overcome this buffer, this thousand feet. As Mr. Gergen pointed out, if you read the ordinance. So 10 dot 17 dot seven, the facility may not be located within 1,000 feet of the property law. We're talking our facility and 1,000 feet of the property line of the daycare center. Which we are over that line, we're at 1,100. If you go property to property line, we're at 850 something. So the first thing is, when we read this, we believe that it's actually facility to property line, then we're good to go. If not, then the second way around this, or the first way around this, if we don't, we don't believe it. That should not be facilitated to property line. We could get a variance from you guys, because this is written in the year code for the city of Antioch, village of Antioch. Directly, that you guys can give us a variance to go through that. If you guys don't want to go the variance route, then the other route we can do is actually split the property. Which will then come back and say, okay, we're now at a parking lot, we have two pins, and we're now the 1,125. We're over the 1,000. But looking for the path of these resistance, I thought we would come, discuss this. Figure out, one, if this was an acceptable location for you guys. And then, two, how do we make it work within the ordinance, one. We get it by right, two, do we do it by variance, or three, do we split the property? I mean, there's. In separate ways that are all. You know, attainable to get this property. You know, approved especially.
So under these circumstances, we probably wish.
Mr. Gergen, you want me to start or you want to start? All right. So I will. Again, thank you, sir. Reading from 10 dash 17 dash 7, I believe is what you write from it, I'm just going to read exactly. Facility may not be located within 1,000, facility may not be located within 1,000 feet of property line. Of a pre-existing public or private nursery, school, preschool, primary, secondary school. Licensed child care facility, public park, public library, recreational center or arcade, other than on license to operate video gaming terminals. And which prohibits access to persons under age of two years. Where any centers of vocational training are shut off in fast places, public or private. School for purposes of section. Skipping now. The answer to all of that, or. The facility may not do up any sales at this degree, cannabis other than the authorized that we have. At least 75% of the floor, or I mean, it tends to be activated by a dispensing organization. Shall we devote the activities of the dispensing organization to that? For purposes of determining required parking set facility shall be classified to the retail support. In service shop, other section 10 dash 11 dash 6 of the code provided. The village based on. Official reduced part. Provided with all of this analysis needed through section 10 dash 17 dash 3 and 10 dash 17 dash 4 of this vote. And 7.7, petitioner shall file an affidavit with the village for basis bias and such. So the term facility. I'll make a little joke, lawyers are great at talking about definitions and finding out what's under the flag. The term facility is not necessarily defined in the vote. I would say that either a tax amendment. Or a variance would be in order on this to ensure that we have. I don't know if we have, do we have the updated compliance or not? Not yet, no. All right, so we also are lacking, which I'm sure any applicant would be more than happy to sign an affidavit, not to sign an affidavit. But we do not have the affidavit of compliance. So I think that either the variance or your request. To have a tax amendment to reduce that amount to. Less, what's 884 or less feet. Would be the most in order, so one of those two avenues would be really well. Though.
Facility though, and because we're dealing with a retail strip mall. The size of it.
Sure.
Its boundary. Facility to me with ways. Yeah, I get where we go from property line to property line. But in these circumstances, being subdivided by how many different spaces there are. So. However, we can work this off.
Sure. If we were to do a variance, the variance would be essentially. The nice thing about variances is they are specific to properties. The variances, we all know, you can't make something work but for this one thing that happens. So to your point, if there was a variance on this, you would say we are varying that requirement so as to allow that. Through the tax amendment, we would then have to reexamine.
The entire.
The entire idea of, do you want it to be 500, like the 700, you're worried about it all together. But the variance with those site specific senses. To your point.
Thank you. So could, Mr. Garian, could you refresh my memory back when we. You know, passed the zoning map?
Right.
Is this strip mall an area that we identified? As a potential for a dispensary?
Part of it is, half of it is in outside our map, in other words. We have a map that shows all the potential available sites that would directly. Would be eligible to have a cannabis dispensary. And part of this site is located outside those circles, we have a circle, basically circles which restrict. Any type of uses because they're within. 1,000 feet of whether it's a daycare or a school or whatever. So this part of this site is outside that area, but. Property itself, part of that property. Is located within that prohibited 1,000 foot circle area. That's why staff is also consistent, we've also gotten property lines, property lines, that's why. Village council that variance, at least a minimum of a variance could be appropriate, because we've been very consistent. And this is what we particularly are expressed to all the applicants consistently. And the maps reflect that fact, it's property line, the property line. Whether it's a facility, so we've also had a more conservative perspective, so. To answer your question directly. They would need some type of procedural relief, leave, because part of the property. Is within that 1,000 foot structure.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, I mean, I just. I don't know what we need the other commissioners to say, but. I personally, without looking into it further. Don't know that I would be comfortable since it is within 1,000 feet of the childcare center. Mr. McCarty?
Anything else?
Not at this time. Michael, you have to address the parking too, I go to LA Tan and nail salon, the parking sign. With regards to the legal stuff, I tend to lean towards consistency. And. I would prefer a tax. Of variance.
Try to stay focused on this one.
I guess, thank you for at least being persistent and trying to stay.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is your first site, so, and I would agree, I don't think. An issue. As far as the tax amendment versus the variance. I think I would be okay with it, but either way. But. If you issue a variance from one, then you typically. Starting on a path of having to do a variance for potentially all.
I would say, yeah, I need. All right, so. A variance, like, is very definite. I understand your argument, but. As it may have hurt them, they're impressive. I would say, no, you're not bound by. I understand the logic of the difference. The tax amendment is, it's law, and one thing I was, I had, I apologize to your chair. See, tax amendment is, is law, and one thing I was, I had, I apologize to your chair. It also depends on what the person asks, if they, if the person comes in and asks for a tax amendment, then you consider a tax one, they come in and have a variance. So that's kind of a big part of that, right, it's just like anything else, we're leaving the process, starts the process. Um, so your point is well taken, you don't want to go down the variance path, we'll have you go very, very, very. Um, but every one of the voting judge, um, is unique characteristics. And quite frankly, we're not, there's not going to be twenty-five, I haven't all of the numbers going to be, but they're probably not going to be. So you're really wanting to.
All good twice then. It's very similar to running a P U D. So, you set up a P U D for one, doesn't mean that that P U D. Flexibility under those.
He, I have, you can apply for two forms of deed too, under our code.
Correct.
There are different codes, the reason I ask is differently, because that is never one, you can only make one request for the name, you can either say I'm going to ask a variance. Or a special use permit, or a zoning testing. So how we do it, you can ask for a more different form, correct? I can do both.
And we also can divide the property.
Right.
Alright, right, I mean, that's the, we're looking for the, I mean, it's going to cost us four times the amount to buy the property.
Right.
So then we're looking, and it'll take a little bit, so, you know, one of the things, and, and when we brought in by the city, and, is how quickly can we get this open as well? I mean, that's why we picked, you know, from first spot to the second spot, spot, to now this one, this is our, you know. We're looking for the path of these resistance here, we've got a building, we've got, it's going to be white box, Edward Johnson, they, they released it up the last week. Um, and they're out, and then we can, within three months, you know, have our facility openly up and, you know. Not running, but ready for inspections, uh, by the city and by the state. Um, you know, where with the packing house. It just, I mean, they kept getting bigger and bigger, more and more issues, and it was over three million dollars for thirty-five hundred. You know, with all the extra parking, and all the updating, the environmentals, um, and then also, you know. We had another thirty-five hundred square feet, but we had to add more parking to if we wanted to use the rest of the building, it just became costly. Um, so, working with Michael and the city, this was our, you know, quickest, fastest path way forward. And if you guys, i- if it's, you don't want to give us a variance, and you don't want to do the tax amendment. We'll divide the lot, I mean, I'm just at this point saying, okay, is, is this property, you know, acceptable to you guys? And if so, how are we going to get it done, do they have yours? If you don't like A or B, will they see, you know, A's easiest, B's, you know, the, the variance I'm looking for. If that's not acceptable, C will divide the lot, and it's, how long would it take us to do that?
Well, once I stop thinking, getting a plan up, planning a final plan, you could do it within forty-five days. Um, it's not a public hearing, but you'll have to have a very final plan prepared, and so.
And so we will, I mean, this, to get this space to comply, you know, that thousand feet buffer, we can get it done. Without, you know, without coming back through anymore, except for, you know, spending as we've done. At this time, I actually suppose. To put this forward to another day.
I think there, there may be an opportunity, uh, for a special meeting, because I think you'll see both of these cases, we're discussing at times of the essence. So, um, that would, a minimum of three weeks, you know, to give us an opportunity to, uh, publish and, and post.
June twenty-ninth, work for a date for everybody, and on a Friday? Is that Thursday, Thursday? What, what's seven? So, there's no.
I have a question. You are not going forward to be.
At this point now.
What does that mean?
We prefer this spot here.
But at this point, it's a qualified answer, or we're not.
No. Alright, I'm looking for a motion then to.
Are you looking for twenty-nine? I mean, they still have to apply, I mean, that's, there's, there's a little more of a procedure that has to go on that. Would it be your inclination to apply for additional early, in either the form of a variance and or land use controls and the tax amendment? To, that would necessitate a meeting on.
No, we, we've probably subdivided the lot at that point, to get approval tonight that we can use this space. And move forward, we'd rather subdivide the lot, skip that meeting. I mean, we pay the extra, you know, four times the price, but then.
You still need, for qualification, we're still needing in our meeting, so regardless of what happens, you will have to come back to the planning commission.
Yeah. And if you're going to subdivide a lot, it's going to take. Forty-five days. I think it's going to take longer than that, but that's.
I think, you know, would you, would you always just, or procedures, continue it to, to a special meeting, we can, we can work out the details.
But we should have to, be there in twenty minutes, so please go with that. Okay.
So I'll make a motion.
The three dates that were discussed.
What, what time would be on?
Twenty-third would be a Friday. Yeah, I mean, oh, God, they, I, I love to work with those, anyway, so I have to be done in one hour. Um, I also know people have, they have work obligations, you know. Childcare and whatnot, so whenever it works for you, I would imagine it would have been before five, and it wouldn't start after, right? That's, I'm just trying to make this a little simpler, but you guys get to pick, that's not my.
Continuance, we don't have to republish?
We don't have to republish for a special use, obviously, if that could seek the various, we'll have to publish. If there's other relief that's requested, in the form of a tax amendment, some sort of subdivision of property and or variance will republish it for that time.
Correct.
So, one spot would be the twenty-third at seven P M.
I can't do it from there.
You're out, I don't.
I'm out. Or sound through your.
Yes.
I need a motion.
Okay, so I will make a motion to con, to continue this to a special meeting to be held on June twenty-seven. Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Motion passed, so we will continue this on the twenty-seventh. Thank you, we're staff trying to work out the, uh, direction you're going to go, and let's get this buttoned up. Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is P C B two-three oh-six, consideration special use operation for a cannabis country. Become known as four-five-three Main Street, number two-zero oh-five.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairperson, Chairman. Um, with respect to, um, the applicant, that the record reflects, this is a public hearing being heard pursuant to public notice, according to state statutes, applicable ordinances. As a chairman, this matter comes before you this evening for a special use, uh, for the property, becoming known as four-five-three Main Street. The applicant, um, is seeking a, uh, proposed special use for a cannabis dispensary. Um, the proposed property is, again, four fifty-three Main Street, so for any context, the property is located just north of North Avenue. It's located on the east side of Route eighty-three, just a little bit northeast of the, um, the packing house. If you're quite aware of the packing house, so this property is currently in zone M one. As recall, a number of years ago, um, this property, uh, back in two thousand nineteen, um, the applicant, the owner of the property. Uh, Mr. Sunday, he actually came before the planning commission, or he proposed ninety-nine thousand three hundred square foot industrial building. If we call it a proposed P U D, a linear development for a light industrial park was being proposed for this large piece of property. This parcel here actually is a larger piece, the applicant's only proposing to take the small portion of the frontage. As of this proposed P U D, so. The bill board did approve a nine thousand three hundred square foot industrial building on the subject site. And as, as I explained, the applicant is hoping to utilize that, um, building. Once it's constructed for a future permanent home for their cannabis dispensary. Um, the applicant has identified proposing to take approximately four thousand nine hundred square feet, ultimately. Of that nine thousand three hundred square foot building for a future cannabis dispensary. As I already outlined, for special uses, it's also critical to look at the context of the area. What is the area, the character of the general area, so I wanted to discuss very briefly the general character. Uh, so the area, I'm sorry, to, um, the west. Uh, first, property to the north is currently zone light industrial. A property to the south, uh, is also some light industrial. Property to the east, storage facilities, light industrial, and the property to the west, uh, is currently part of the P U D. I'm sorry, property to the east, uh, is currently a, part of the P U D, and it's light industrial. But there is an existing residential area, Oakwood Knowles, uh, which is located to the east, you can see the general parameters of this property. You can see the proximity of, um, the, this residential homes of Oakwood Knowles, which basically involves. Um, or that's what we call, what I refer to as the Sunday P U D. Uh, which again was originally proposed as a small light industrial park. So, uh, there is a residential neighborhood, uh, to the east of this property. Um, and then to the west, there is a light industrial, uh, storage facility. So that gives you the context of the area, so generally the area around it, with the exception of the Oakwood Knowles. Some division is generally like industrial character. So, as you well know, in courses, ten dash two dash twelve, there are two findings of facts that are required for special use. First finding of fact is special use not be serious to use and enjoyment of the other properties. In the immediate area, of course, is already made a, no substantial dimension of the values within the neighborhood. Again, um, as I've already outlined, the subject area contains numerous, uh, storage facilities, numerous like industrial area. Basically industrial area in character. Um, there's frankly nothing in this proposal, um, with regards to the actual proposed building, as you will know, there's, we approved a ninety-nine thousand three hundred square foot building. Which was supposed to be used for light industrial. Uh, there's nothing to reflect the approval of a approximately four thousand square foot cannabis dispensary. In this a- approved light industrial building, would have a negative impact on the light industrial, uh, or storage facilities. Uh, have, have a negative impact on the property values, to have any type of negative impact on those adjacent properties. We would submit that the general, uh, character, um, of this area would remain the same. As you all know, uh, cannabis dispensaries, um, are allowed as a special use in the M one district, this is the M one zoning. So therefore, we would submit to the applicant, this complying with the first finding of fact, uh, as relates to this proposed special use. Second, finding of fact for special use, establishment of the special use would not be the normal orderly development. Or improvement of the adjacent properties, again, there's nothing to indicate reflect. That proposed cannabis dispensary as proposed would have, is having any type of impact, uh, on existing character, which I've already. Certainly light industrial, uh, the turn of development in this area continues to be light industrial. Um, and perhaps there may be some limited commercial opportunities. This proposed use may be consistent with a future trend of attracting additional commercial development to this area. And frankly, a, uh, revitalization of this area, as you recall, when we, because we analyzed the. Previous cannabis dispensary at the packing house, staff outlined our continued concerns of this area. This corridor section has seen continued deterioration, so we are looking for redevelopment and opportunities for redevelopment. So frankly, this proposed building, um, this proposed use could hopefully bring some additional, uh, economic. Commercial energy to this section of, of Route eighty-three four. Now, one of the unique aspects, um, there are several unique aspects of this proposal, so I want to discuss that very briefly. Before I get into the permanent home. One of the unique aspects of this proposal is applicant, um, is proposing to operate a temporary trailer. And I'm going to allow the applicant to outline that temporary proposal, but to allow the applicant to get up and running. What they are proposing is to break a trailer, uh, which again complies with all I D, half power requirements. State requirements, which I'm going to allow the applicant specifically outline, so this proposed trailer. Does comply with state's, you know, all the security requirements, as you will know, cannabis dispensaries have an extensive. A state requirement with regards to security and, uh, specific requirements. I'm going to allow the applicant, um, who does his business every day to provide you some additional illumination or some additional information. Pertaining to those requirements, and how this trailer, uh, will comply with that, but for you use existing site. There is an existing building, as you all know, uh, if you know where the bikini store is, that building currently, uh, again, is zone M one. There's an existing building with an existing parking lot. The applicant would like to locate a temporary trailer, which would, again, would be used on a temporary basis for cannabis sales. At the northeast corner of this whole site, a bikini building site. Uh, this site would allow the applicant, um, to operate a cannabis dispensary at a very temporary basis. There would be existing parking, which I'll kind of provide some additional illumination on, or additional information on the parking. Um, but this would allow the applicant to proceed with the construction of the nine thousand three hundred square foot building. Or allow Mr. Sunday, the owner, to proceed with construction of the nine thousand three hundred square foot. And that would be the future permanent home of this proposed cannabis dispensary. So when we're considering this proposal, uh, as a unique, it's almost two-faced, uh, proposed, or the first phase would be a temporary trailer. Located behind existing building that's located there, the second phase would be a future permanent building. Um, so as relates to a park, as you know, um, parking is also critically important. When we're talking about cannabis dispensaries, based on what we already discussed. So proposed, um, with respect to permanent building, proposed space of this permanent home. And I'm going to discuss the permanent home marketing requirements. The future, uh, space would be approximately four thousand nine hundred square feet. So based on that, if you, again, use the retail analysis of one space per three hundred, a total of sixteen spaces would be required. Using a more extensive standard, let's say doubling that, the one space per hundred and fifty square feet, consistent with sit-down restaurant. A total of thirty-two spaces would be required. If you look at the applicant's site, and it's actually before you this evening, the applicant has both a contained total of thirty-six spaces. Including two handicap spaces. So based on our analysis, we believe that there would be sufficient parking for the future permanent home of this proposed. Forty-six hundred square foot cannabis facility, um, based on our, uh, analysis, we think there would be sufficient parking. And we're using a consistent standard across the board, which we use across the board for all cannabis dispensary applications. Now, for the temporary trailer, the applicant has existing thirty-six spaces at the bikini building, what I commonly refer to as bikini store building. So we, again, based on that very small space, which I believe is six hundred square feet, I may be correct in that. It's a very small trailer, uh, we believe there's sufficient parking to provide, uh, parking for that temporarily, temporary trailer. So, some is substance, our parking analysis, we believe there's sufficient parking, not only for a temporary trailer. Uh, but more importantly, for the future permanent home of this dispensary. So I know that's somewhat complicated, but some, at the end of the day, we think there's sufficient parking. How about the guards of access, uh, there would be. Uh there would be an existing access, there's existing access to the building that currently is located. Uh we've had discussions with the applicant about a new access. As you well know, this proposal is located on Route eighty-three. Uh the only department transportation has complete jurisdiction over all future access or new access points. So we've had discussions with the applicant. Uh the permanent new construction of this new facility uh would have to have um. A Illinois Department of Transportation permit access. So that would be required, there theoretically could be some improvements that I dot will would require. I know, I believe the owners had some preliminary discussions with I dot about a future access point. Um but I just wanted for the record that the applicant will have been working with I dot for a future access point. There's a future access point to the south, which will provide uh another access to this future nine thousand square foot building. Uh so there could be two access points to this proposed cannabis dispensary. And again, for the record, which I'll talk about in a minute. Texture, um this um the cannabis dispensary will only take up approximately one half of this future building. So there could be another commercial use um for this building. But we believe again that these two access points would provide sufficient access to this future site. And also there's sufficient parking for this applicant's needs and any future need. Now with regards to the architecture. The applicant uh is is working with the owner of the property, as well know, it towards a light industrial building. The provisional uh nine thousand square foot building was approved for a light industrial building. So based on that use, applicant had the original light industrial um character, light industrial character. There were four bay doors, it was generally a uh light industrial uh building that reflected a industrial use. And the applicant is proposing a retail use, so the applicant has made some revisions to the proposed elevations. Um so when we approved the two thousand nineteen build, two thousand nineteen, the build was approved. There was certain elevations which were approved. The applicant is seeking approval this evening for modifications. So as you see my revised staff report, which I submitted to you this evening, there is a new proposed elevation. This proposed elevation shows that two of the bay doors would be replaced with storefront windows. Uh and then two existing bay doors would continue. So the building almost looks like it's half industrial and half retail, half commercial. Our staff did outline some architectural concerns. We will specifically seek an opportunity to work with the owner of the building and the applicant to again potentially. Uh move the two existing proposed bay doors to the rear. And then we had that discussion uh at the original case, but we think that this proposed building should have a uniform. Commercial appearance, it's going to be used for cannabis dispensary. Um it should have con- consistent appearance across its whole face. So we would like to work with the applicant, like to work with the owner to maybe revise the new proposed elevations to have more uh. Commercial character. We also think there's an opportunity to uh refine the precast, incorporate whether it's a quick brick or something again. Uh because this is potentially anything and potentially commercial building. Therefore, we have an opportunity to upgrade the materials. It would be still comfortable with the going to be precast, but there are uh certain applications could be used for precast. Um which would appear like a stamped uh brick. Again, the right reason why we're, we think there's an appropriate, we think the general use of this building is changing. From a light industrial building to a potentially a commercial building. Which when again improved overall quality of the corridor, we think the applicant or builder, owner of this building could attract future commercial users. Uh to the building itself. Uh staff would also request um uh this that the commercial storefront windows be slightly modified. To reflect a consistent commercial appearance across the board. And we also think there's some opportunities to add some decorative lighting. So again, what we're looking for is a building not to really radically change the building, not to change the square footage, not to change the materials. But then make at least at a minimum, the western elevation facing Route eighty-three. Uh more of a commercial appearance, uh which would, we think would help the applicant. And also help the owner of the building uh attract future commercial uh developers to this structure. And if in fact the owner of the building continued to want to use the building for light industrial purposes. We think the locating the bay doors to to the uh eastern elevation would still provide him access into the building. That would not preclude him from having a light industrial use of the building. So again, the reason why we're discussing this is the applicant requesting some modifications to the elevations. So without inappropriate time, to have a more comprehensive uh analysis, more comprehensive look at the overall building itself. You also have your proposed landscape plan in your package. So applicant, again, very quickly, uh has provided us a landscape plan. Which should be acquired by the location site plan and view ordinance. While this is not technically a site plan review, we are incorporating this landscape plan as part of the special use. So um as you can see, uh there's approximately approximately three hundred fifty feet of furniture along Route eighty-three. The applicant has provided uh one tree for every three feet, which will be twelve new trees along planet along Route eighty-three. Uh the applicant is also proposing a uh bio soil, which would have extensive naturalistic planting. So it would be a seed, naturalistic seeding of that bio soil. So that proposed bio soil would be uh used in lieu of uh planting uh shrubs. So with additional landscaping, there would be extensive new landscaping along uh Route eighty-three. Additionally, applicants providing new landscape buffer. On the northern perimeter of this property, which I've already provided summary, which extends incorporate additional twelve new trees and also hundred seventy-four shrubs. Could also be existing landscaping uh on the northern perimeter. There's an existing track and access drive south, so landscaping would be limited. As you recall, the original P U D didn't incorporate extensive landscaping, planting of new trees uh in the detention area just to the west of the site. In addition, there was an actually proposed privacy fence or proposed uh fence along the western perimeter. We wanted a clarification that that at least the western, I'm sorry, sorry, that the eastern perimeter. Behind this building will be um conferred in some type of fence. Uh which would provide additional buffering, uh not only to the P U D, future P U, light industrial P U D to locate it to the. To the east of the site, but more importantly, provide additional buffering to the Oakwood Knowles. As you recall, maybe don't recall, there was extensive landscape buffering along the property line of the of the future light industrial park. Abutting Oakwood Knowles. So there will be uh by reflection, there will be fencing and excessive landscaping along the future. Um edge of this any future light industrial park that abutted. The residential homes to to the east and then there would be additional landscaping and a fence behind this post nine thousand square foot building. So there would be double buffering. Um so we think that would minimize any potential impacts on the single-family homes located within uh Oakwood Knowles. Uh with regards to trash enclosure, the applicant has complied with requirement, there is a proposed trash enclosure. Which will be constructed in the same materials as the building itself. Now, staff was made aware this evening, actually this morning for the record. That potentially there may be a existing daycare operator of a single-family home. So based on that fact, um we did originally make a favorable recommendation or approval of this proposed. Um special use, but if in fact there is a daycare. Uh procedurally, um there would have to be either a variance or a tax amendment. To uh allow the applicant to seek relief, because based on our analysis. The applicant does not have a thousand foot buffer between the proposed existing daycare operator of a single-family home. Um and um the actual proposed use. It's my understanding that expressed concern was articulated by a resident. Uh so I wanted to bring that to the um commission's attention. So for full disclosure, I believe that individual may be here this evening to have public comment. So uh with that, I've included my staff board, based on a discussion, um we will potentially be seeking um. A continuance of this case to a special meeting. Uh with that, I'll include my staff board.
Thank you, Mr. Harren. Um do we have anybody here representing the applicant?
Yes.
Someone would like to come up?
Yeah. Absolutely.
So um my name is uh Steve Weber, I'm a representative of PTS Consume, we're the applicant for the store. Um I can answer whatever questions you have, but regarding the the temporary trailer, as Mike said, that needs to be I D F P R. Approved, which means that it needs to be match all the requirements of our permanent store regarding security. Um customer check-in, uh security of of the pro- of the uh of the products, so to say. Um so everything would be identical to our permanent store, just a much smaller, obviously format. We would have a limited menu, the lighting would be would be the same, so everything would have to be a hundred percent compliant, both ADA. Um as well as state, state compliant. In regards to the information that just got brought up tonight. Um I would uh obviously we have to, you know, validate to make sure that, you know, what was said is is real. Just heard about it very recently, so um. Prior to that, all the maps showed that this was a an acceptable location. Um so we weren't able to to do anything prior prior to this. Um but with that being said, um I would obviously like to definitely apply and get a, you know. Obviously, there's there's already natural buffering there, but I would like to go to the extra step. And obviously get a um, you know, a zoning variance to allow us to operate the store there. The reason for the trailer, we didn't want to miss a summer month for revenue while the store is getting built. Makes sense, if we can operate a compliant location there, the revenue is obviously good for for our business, it's also good for the city itself.
Yes.
Um Mister Weber. On pursuant to section in ten dash or seventeen dash ten dash seven, I think it's subsection G. Uh you have to plead and file with the village at the highest level.
Um no.
Okay, so you'll make sure that that gets put on.
Absolutely.
You'll all, Mr. Harren, am I loud?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh Mister Weber, you do understand that pursuant to our new picture, all right?
Yes, yes.
You may have heard some discussion about thousand foot. And timing of reconsidered or considering these.
Yes.
Um.
Um so the. As far as like the the bay doors, are you are you open to moving those to the that? Do you get it more about?
I could let, so we have my architect here as well as the.
Okay.
The developer, so I want to let the developer.
Okay.
So with the with the bay doors, originally I had put bay doors. In there, they wanted to change it. Up towards Sunday. Uh so that was the reason I put the uh showing all the bay doors originally, saying something they want to change if they were. And the the building, it doesn't show the backside, but there is already garage doors on the backside.
So you'd be eliminating the bay doors.
Correct, and the the reason was because it's like uh precast building, you can't just cut into it easy. So it's like a garage doors or put windows in.
So you're open to putting the glass in then?
Yeah, I've been.
Okay, and what about the uh the lighting in the front facing eighty-three?
The right, what architect for that?
Whoever wants to.
So uh Harry Stamos for the record. And as far as the lighting goes, we're open to building lighting, you know, we are sensitive to the area as well. So we probably do some, you know, compacted scots on the wall. We're not shooting light out.
Right.
Into the public, um there is site lighting in the photo metrics, they're proposed from the original building as well, so there is site lighting now.
So what is the site lighting that's, I'm sorry, that against that? Do you know?
It should, it was submitted.
It was submitted, I saw it electronically.
This was the record.
Yeah, I think staff did review that. We did submit that electronically, review the foot candle illumination, so the applicant gets full of that, because that's provided. The devotions ordinance is all well below half foot candle at the popping lights. They also provide specifications for lighting fixtures. So this was the record that. Is the decorative lighting.
I think the base event with this tonight, um if you don't mind, everybody's talking on the mics, whether you're testifying or even the board, um thank you. Alright, um.
Yes, one one last question for the applicant that I had. Is how long do you anticipate the tray, you know, the trailer uh versus, you know, construction of the building? That it would be operating out of the.
Obviously, we'd want the building built as fast as as possible. It it sounds like you may have a little bit of a delay based on, you know.
Yeah.
To address the scenario, but you know, assuming weather is is good. I think, you know, four or five months max.
Okay.
Could be pulling into the.
Okay, I didn't have any. I mean, I feel like anything is mute right now. Um so Michael did, I'm sure they did, but um did the staff look at the distance between. This proposed building and the White House church?
Yes, we did, so we, you know, this again, this property's been identified as being a site that's available, does comply with the thousand foot. A limitation for any type of daycare or 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 um other facility, which is consistent with our state, our ordinance. Again, for the record, I don't believe churches are actually uh included in our, no, so bring a record.
Okay.
Daycares, parks, schools, um things like that, that's we follow the state's action considerably. We did not, yes, and if there is a daycare within Oakwood Knowles, we simply did not know that, that this is a small.
The licensed small daycare.
Uh that's my, I've not talked to the individuals, we will have not do that, I'm not sure in the first actually here this evening. Um but it's my understanding it is licensed daycare.
Um if there's someone else who would like to speak to this from daycare. Have you been sworn in?
Hi, I'm Darcy Desault, I'm at two-five-two Lakewood Drive, which is in.
Have you been sworn in?
Yes, yes, yes. And I do conduct a licensed daycare in my home for the last twenty-five years. So that is my concern with the dispensary, that it be in the legality of the village, of the ordinance.
What's the address?
Two-five-two Lakewood Drive, which is directly behind. Where this is, I mean, I'm being built.
Is there direct access um from your site to Oakwood Knowles?
There can be, there is a wooded area there, but there is a direct, you could directly go through, of course, it's not, I mean, by walking distance, yes.
I think the applicant had, you're going to put a fence there, okay, did you see that earlier? There's going to be a fence back there.
Well, there will be two fences, so the applicant, uh with their proposed um building, the nine thousand square building, there will be a privacy fence or a fence. Uh which will provide a buffer. Uh and then when Mister Sunday proceeds this development of the balance of property. There will be additional landscaping and potentially, I think, a privacy fence along Oakwood Knowles. So there there be, that will be two fences, which I think would hopefully would address the uh legitimate concern by by the homeowner.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any other.
And we don't quite know yet if that's.
No, I need a. I want to do a measurement.
Yes.
Okay. I know, we don't. Yeah, as a person I've heard the actual address so.
Okay, so presently, we're looking to uh continue this to the special media.
About first, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion. Yes, to continue, easy being twenty-three dash zero six to special.
A second.
Your comment?
Yes.
Turning?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we will take this up again on our sound, put some concerns and definitely look at to be as roughed off that daycare facility towards uh suspension. Next on the agenda is PCB two three oh seven, consideration of text. It's only ordinance. During the lapse, especially.
Yes, this is something we wanted to discuss, just have a very just general discussion. This is not a tax amendment for public hearing yet, uh we wanted to just get some input. Um so one of the questions that has come up recently is um when special uses are approved, uh and they're actually not um uh the special use sits there and there's no pursuit, no development of that special use, somebody's holding the special use. Um what remedy does the village have um regards to um either requiring the applicant who's only has special use to either um rescind it, uh they rescind it or surrender it? Um so historically, with larger P U Ds, there was a large master planning communities, you know, there's generally been most degrees either have a minimum of one year or two year uh period to allow the developer to uh proceed with a development of a large P U D or a large, whether it's commercial P U D or residential. Uh so to historically, we've given them at least um um at least a minimum of a year, I've seen up to two years and some some larger P U Ds, sometimes uh there'll be an extension within the terms of P U D allowing the applicant at least two years to proceed, there's so much engineering and so much due diligence, it has to be completed, larger projects. But for smaller uh special uses, um we think that there is maybe an opportunity to tweak or revise our um current special use ordinance. So just for the record, our ordinance um currently says a lapses of approval and discontinuance. So what constitutes a discontinuous of special use? An ordinance approving a special use is valid for twelve months from the date of the ordinance unless a building permit is obtained. So if you proceed with carrying a building permit, then obviously the the twelve months uh is no longer applicable. Uh only use the commercial, a building permit is not obtained, or a use is not commenced within such time, approval of special use not will not lapse, it shall become null and void. So in other words, if you don't do any twelve months, a definition that the special use becomes null and void. Um if a special use is discontinued for a period of up to six months or longer, the special use shall be considered abandoned and shall become null and void. Re-statement of the establishment of special use would not require approval pursuant to the provisions of this section. So um we do already have some provisions which outline when a special use will lapse or become null and void. But the question is, uh is twelve months too long? In some smaller cases, um if somebody's holding up a special use, um and there's an opportunity to have that small property redeveloped and then and another applicant comes and maybe be interested. Uh having a property just being, you know, held in a vacuum twelve months, many cases will prohibit prospective developers from pursuing that because very few developers or 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 land purchasers are going to sit around for twelve months to allow the applicants special use to lapse. So we wanted to at least start the discussion of what whether it makes sense in this case to uh tweak this ordinance to allow um some type of of additional ability to the village to rescind a special use if it's not being pursued or there's no actionable um activity, i.e. they're not specifically excavating the site, not doing some type of due diligence, doing engineering, building permits. There's not no volitional acts that request that they're pursuing the development. Does it make sense to have some additional language in this section to allow the village to uh have a mechanism to rescind that special use? So I think I wanted to start the discussion this evening to provide the village some additional powers, which again will help the developer process. They want to see, they want to see, we want to, we welcome all developers. Once the developer gets a project approved, we want to see action and activity. And if they're not, they're not able to pursue that, then they they need, they need to basically let the village know that and they need to provide a necessary decision so we can work with other owners, other prospective developers, and find a new use of it. With that, I'll conclude my staff.
Okay, uh.
So is, are we looking like um at like after six months or what would the timeframe be? I mean, cause to me, a year is a long time.
A year is a long time, years, I mean, not for a large huge P U D, house and homes.
No, right.
But for a small, a small piece of property.
Right.
I think it's, it's very long.
Yeah.
And it holds, it holds the development up, and that nothing can be done with that property.
Right.
And we were, this is not, um this is not a theoretical discussion, we we have this challenge right now. Um so we think there should be a provision, I think we'd like to work with the village attorney and come in with some special language, would give the village some discretion. Obviously protect the developers' rights, but give the village some discretion, whether it's six months or maybe some general language where the village could uh with the village's warrants discretion, you can rescind a special use, but there's no act, action being pursued on that special.
It's cursing.
Okay, at this time.
So with that, I'll work this for myself, village attorney.
Yeah, I mean, one thing, Mr. Gary did a very nice job explaining that, but we are when you go to law school, they teach you about this concept called real estate waste. And we're supposed to be using real estate, if it's not on the tax rolls, it's not doing us any good. Real estate is a limited resource, the village only has certain boundaries to be. So for someone to sit on something for years on it is not really, Mike did a very nice job explaining that. Um I think, if I may, most mic communities, it's a hundred and eighty days, so that's about six months. Um a year is a little bit generous, um especially with a year with a building permit, cause then you get the building permit and you can sit on it after that. So um I do not shape policy that comes from staff, goes to all of you. I just relay um the experiences that I have had and mistakes that I've made for other municipalities, so thank you.
Um six months is fair for a small, you know, lot that is something coming up. But if it's a P U D, we could then, at that timeframe, add in a a uh an acceptable existence daylight for it.
There's also, um I have a community that has been continuing the same sunset for an excess of five years. So they just reissue it every six months, which is completely permissible, but it goes back before this board to say, do we want to do this? And then you make an informed decision about the policy that you're on. But also, an interesting thing that came up tonight when we talked about section seventeen that ten dash seven was there was an affidavit of use, which I thought was an interesting way that if Michael's given a little flexibility and I can work with him on that, maybe someone puts in there that they agree that they will start their operations of business within six months or some permutation on that, that they have made that commitment going in, that they're going to go forward and not just bank a special use. Great, so I'll work with uh uh Mr. Basali on a draft tax ordinance to bring that back in the near future.
So do we need a continuance on this, or just?
No, no, we're good. There'll be a, there'll be a public hearing.
Perfect. Alright. All very right.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.